You want a water, Nathan? I have an extra water.
And it's cold, man's cold. Ooh, nice. Oh, and I have a shirt.
I know.
Look at my shirt. Oh, I love that. Oh, yay. I'll wear this. Come on. I love that. I don't know, you guys see what kind of shirt is this? It's a City of Canton shirt, isn't it? It's pink. Hi.
Neither, neither does one.
Well, I can't say. Oh, but you said City of Canton. But I'm sure I'm having a new T-shirt. What's going on with you? Stay in line, stay in line.
Do my job. My...
Stay out of trouble? There you go. Stay out of trouble. We're trying. Yep. The controversy doesn't bother you anywhere.
My business.
Let's go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. Uh, the first order of business that we have, uh, has to do with the, um, public comment period on our annual update or our capital improvements element, uh, and five-year short-term work plan for our impact fee program. Where's Ken? Oh, there you are. Okay. We, this is open for any comments regarding that five-year short-term work program that's been available for some time now. And, uh, if anyone has any comments from the public, we would certainly welcome those. We will be taking this up at a little bit later in the meeting for the council discussion, but we're here to, uh, receive any public input at this time. Okay. Hey, this, this program, you want to explain that just a little bit, Ken, about the, um, the, the impact fee program and what the money is go to and for? And you don't have to go over every project, but in, just in general.
The State of Georgia did enact, uh, impact fee laws that allows local governments to adopt, uh, impact fee structure, if you will. Impact fees are a fee that are established so that new development would pay their fair share, prorated share of system improvements that are required of this, uh, new development and not burden the existing residents and taxpayers for having to bear the cost for those system improvements. The City of Canton has a parks, recreation, open space impact fee, a fire impact fee, a police impact fee, and a roads impact fee. But this is a, a method that allows development to pay their prorated fair share of, uh, s- uh, developments that are within our capital improvements element of the Conferential Plan.
Okay.
And not burden taxpayers.
Mm-hmm. Uh, you want to make a comment regarding that? Or Ken, would you repeat that question?
The question was, does this, uh, cover, uh, current developments underway? And the answer is yes.
Anyone else would like to make a comment? If not, we will close the public comment portion of, of this hearing, and it will be discussed by the council a little later in the meeting. Okay? Now, to get to our regular work session agenda, uh, if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rust?
Dear Lord, thank you for the gift of free li- will and for our country where we are free to exercise it. Since we are free to see the beauty of the world around us or see that same beauty in a less than beautiful light, please help us see beauty in all its grandeur because it is you that we are seeing. Thank you for giving us this window to you here on earth. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. First item on our agenda is employee recognition, the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Association training, I believe, that some of our folks have been through for maybe a year or so. Uh, Chief Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. If I can have Assistant Chief Steve Merrifield, Captain Wendell Turner, and Sergeant Rodney Campbell step forward, please. Um, note, one of our other employees, our supervisor, Sergeant Ben Gillen, he had out to, uh, be out due to a family emergency this evening. Um, like the mayor said, over the past year, well, let me step, let me step back real quick. Um, one of the goals, uh, of the city of Canton and not just the police department is to, um, to develop, um, and our, 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 the skill sets, develop the careers, and invest in our employees. Um, when you do that, that in turn, um, renders professional services, services to the community and to the community and the citizens that we serve. In saying that, we have that very same approach a- at the police department. And, um, over the past year, uh, these men, these supervisors and commanders here have been attending the FBI, it's the Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, uh, that's long for LITA, um, uh, the Supervisor Institute, Command Leadership Institute, and Executive Leadership Institute. Um, that is numerous hours, probably, I think, over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty hours worth of training, uh, that they've attended over this year. Our goal at the police department is to have this very same training attended by all of our supervisors. We have really tried to, to, to enhance and increase our specialized training for, um, our supervisors, uh, our leaders, and, and our officers, and all of our employees at the department. And, and we in turn think that, um, is what, uh, what we're charged to do. Training only enhances our abilities to serve the community, like I said. The courses, uh, that these, these men, uh, took, um, everything from leadership case studies, um, to dealing with, uh, dealing with employees, how to, uh, affect change in an organization, um, power of influence, um, transactional and transformational lea- and leadership in the future of law enforcement, leadership in the future. These gentlemen right here collectively, uh, probably have seventy-five years of law enforcement collectively with Sergeant Gillen. Um, I was, I was thinking today, it was a hundred years of law enforcement experience right here. Um, and that is a lot. Uh, it's, yes, it's developing their skill sets, but it's also refreshing what they've learned over their years of experience, which they can come back and apply, uh, challenge, uh, their employees that they lead, mentor, um, and, and help them grow in their, their abilities and their skill sets, skill sets and organizations. So, with that said, with this accomplishment there, I've been awarded what's called the FBI LITA Trilogy Award. Um, and they'll be getting this award probably within, I think, the next thirty days or so. I thought it was important that, um, that, uh, that these supervisors were acknowledged for this, uh, this achievement, and, uh, just wanted to tell them in front of you that I'm very proud, I'm very humbled, and, uh, I'm very honored to be able to serve with them, um, uh, every day. So, thank you. Great.
Congratulations, gentlemen, and, and, uh, thank you for the service that you give this city, and we already have one of the finest police departments anywhere, uh, under the direction of Chief Mitchell, and, uh, it, it's obvious that it keeps getting better all the time. Thank you so much. Is, uh, Brandon Roberts here? Is anyone here to, uh, receive the Field of Faith proclamation? If not, I'm not going to read the entire, uh, proclamation, but rather, uh, just, just state that, uh, um, on October the twelfth of this year, the parents, students, and coaches will come together on their local high school athletic fields for an event called the Fields of Faith, uh, presenting an opportunity for students to share their testimonies with one another. Fields of Faith was started in two thousand and two in Oklahoma and has now grown to become a nationwide FCA ministry. Uh, so the mayor and city council of the City of Canton do hereby designate Wednesday, October the twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, as Fellowship of Christian Athletes Day in Canton, Georgia, on the occasion of their seventh annual Fields of Faith event. So, we will provide that to, uh, Brandon Roberts had asked that we do that in, in, uh, in honor of their event. Jack?
I'd just like to take an opportunity to speak on that a little bit. It's, it's a wonderful, um, event. I guess, like I say, it's been seven years, it doesn't seem like it's been that long, but, um, it is well-attended every year. We see a lot of people give their life to Christ. We see a lot of young people over there who are doing the right thing and making this city better and all the other cities they live in. Uh, they bring music, they bring, um, memories, they bring fellowship in what youth should be to this city and to all their communities. So, I think Brandon is well-deserved to have this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, public announcements. Anyone have any public announcements? Ms. McGrew?
Of course, thank you. I wanted to remind everybody that this Friday is First Friday, the theme is Oktoberfest, and the live music will be featuring First Generation, and they're an excellent band. I hope you'll come out and enjoy yourselves and, and dance a little bit in the street. Then Saturday morning from nine to one is our famous farmer's market, and at the farmer's market this Saturday is Coffee with a Cop, starting about nine o'clock. Also, at the farmer's market in Cannon Park is going to be a demonstration on vermiculture. And not many people know what vermiculture is, but what that is, is growing worms to eat your kitchen waste, and it makes a compost. And you keep the worms in a bin and, uh, in a cool place, maybe your garage or basement. It's fascinating, and you can grow your own compost from your carrot peelings. Don't laugh.
I'm not, I'm not.
Thank you.
Anyone else have an announcement? Okay. Uh, next item, well, entertain a motion to consider the approval of the agenda, or any changes or anything you'd like to make. If not?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All members voting for the motion. Uh, you also have in your agenda package the minutes from the September the fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, uh, meeting. Uh, are there any corrections or changes to be made to those? Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All members voting for the motion. In your agenda package, you have your, uh, financials for the month of August attached. If there are any questions or comments regarding those, our CFO will certainly, uh, entertain those. Any questions, comments? Okay. That's for pub-, that's for informational purposes only. Uh, under a ten-minute public input, we did not have anyone sign up at this point, so... Under Old Business Dumpster Day update and the employee recognition, Chief Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Over the past several months, um, there's been an event going on, uh, in the city that, um, our code enforcement officers, uh, Revolution Church, and our Public Works Department have joined together and coordinated, it's called Dumpster Days, and it's been a very effective program, uh, over, like I said, the past couple of months. Um, the first, uh, uh, first weekend in August, they went down to South Canton, um, where they, uh, deployed, uh, roll-off dumpsters and containers there, were able to clean up the community there. Juniper Street, uh, the following week, and just most recently, um, in mid-September, mid, mid, it's, end of, mid to the end of September, over here in the, uh, Crystal Street, which is known, uh, in, in this community of the Stumptown area, uh, and able to clean up, um, that area with a lot of, uh, a lot of volunteers, the hard work of our, uh, Public Works, and hard work of our code enforcement officers. And speaking of volunteers and how important that, um, I was talking to, to Officer Sweat with our code enforcement, um, how important the Revolution Church volunteers and Zip Kane has been to connect with our diverse community. And if I could at this time, if I can have, and he didn't know I was gonna do this, if I can have Scott Hooper, uh, Public Works Director, step forward, Officer Mike Sweat, um, Mike Sweat, Officer Eston Holloway, and Mr. Zip Kane from Revolution Church, if you can step forward for just a second. These individuals here are responsible for, um, responsible for the, uh, the Dumpster Day event. Uh, i- it's been such a incredible outreach, and just re- to read some of the results from the three events we've had, um, there have been seventeen fully-loaded roll-off containers of refuse and multiple, multiple dump loads, uh, truckloads of trash taken from these areas, um, which, which, in, in looking at it, is, is a nuisance, it's, it's blighted, but it, it cleans up the area, it cleans up Canton. Uh, in, in saying it, it decreases, uh, any ti- um, the, the potential for criminal activity some in those areas because it's called, if you've never heard it before, it's called the broken windows theory, and, and when those things are occurring, that, those areas are like that, that can, can breed that, that kind of activity. But overall, inclu- and it, uh, increases the quality of life in this community, and that's what we're charged with, uh, as, as we work together and partner together, and I think that's what's important about this. But in all, thirty-nine tons of trash, thirty-nine tons. Um, and it's, uh, all a result of the collaboration between, um, each of these agencies, and I think that's, that's what it's about. So, I applaud you and thank you for, for your work. Thanks.
Thank y'all very much. Uh, that's a phenomenal amount of, of waste to, to remove from our, uh, yards and, and streets and so forth in our city, and it's, it'll certainly make a lot of difference. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, report on our youth program entitled My Own Book. Ms. McGrew and Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, if you don't mind, Ms. Wilson, and I'll do this in conversation form, and please jump in, Ms. Wilson, as you think of anything. Today, uh, we've had several meetings up until today. We've had, uh, meeting with the mayor, city manager, Matthew Thomas, who is economic director, Ms. Stanton, who is our city clerk, is helping us, and we're bouncing around lots of ideas. And I know last year I talked about a s- youth strategic plan, and it's turned out that that might be a, a bit more than we are ready to do at this moment, but we want to be involved in the schools as much as we can because we feel like the city has a duty to help the school system in any way we can, be part of the schools. So what these group, this group has come up with is let's start small and do a book drive, and just do one school at a time, and we've chosen the school nearest to our doors here, City Hall, and that would be Hasty Elementary. We're going to ask people, businesses, to donate new and very gently-used books, and if they don't have a book, maybe a little cash that we can use to go buy books. We're going to have receptacles at various places, and Waste Management has donated some bins for this purpose. We met with the media specialist of Hasty this morning, and she is thrilled that we're going to do this, and our goal is to put a book in the hands of each student by spring break of Hasty Elementary. And the population of that school fluctuates a bit, but it's, it stays right around nine hundred and fifty, and we were hoping to meet that goal by spring break. She's thrilled that we want to do this. So, Ms. Wilson and I have gathered up all this information and schools that want us to do it, and what we need now is because we're going to be doing this in the name of the city, is to ask you as council and mayor if you will, so to speak, give a head nod that you support this effort, since we will be doing it in the name of the city. I don't know that it requires a vote because we're not changing anything, it's just an, an initiative to help students.
We see, uh, uh, you did a good job, that I really don't need to add anything except the fact that it's an opportunity for the city to work hand-in-hand with the schoolchildren. And when we met today with, um, Lori Brackett, who's at Hasty Elementary School, she was overjoyed that the city wanted to give every student at that school a book. She said, there's so many of our students who really may not have a book of their own at home, or if they do have a book of their own, they'll now have a new book of their own, or a different book. So it's really heartwarming to see that it's something that is needed and wanted, and I hope that you will support us in the effort, all of you on the council. I don't think it's gonna be a big job, as Sandy said, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do small bites on this elephant, and we're just doing Ha- Hasty. We hope to have books to send home to the students by their spring break, which is the first week in April.
Great.
So we'll be in search of business partners, individual partners, media partners, anybody who would like to donate a book or a little bit of money to help buy these books. We have the co- collection bins that we'll be distributing around. We'll be advertising this mission via social media, the city's website, if you don't mind if we do that, uh, our own personal social media. The school is excited, they want to put it on their website and their PTA's website, flyers, and, um, we'll be looking for new or very gently-used books. And the level of books that we would like to have donated are pre-K through young adult. And the reason is, we'll be ha- pre-K is because third graders who come from another country who don't speak English have to start reading somewhere, so they usually start on the lower books. And then there are gifted third-grade readers who are already reading ninth-grade books. So our level range of books is pre-K through young adult. So, council, I'm asking you, what do you think? And mayor? I'm getting a head nod here.
I think it's a great, great project, and I commend you and Ms. Wilson and, and any others that's been involved or really undertaking it.
It's been a village.
I, I think it's a, it's really a good project and worthwhile, and, and I think as Ms. Wilson indicated, it also shows us building a cooperative relationship with the school system at the same time, and I think that's very important.
So we have your approval to work in the name of the city? I see another head nod.
Did we tell you the name of the project? It's gonna be called My Own Book. Yes.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
I just had, had one thought. Um, you know, it, a lot of kids remember one book or one first book, certainly, if that's the first book they ever get. It might be really nice if the person that gives the book would have something in the front, please.
That would be lovely.
And, and just identify that person, so it could even more personalize the fact that it was given from an individual.
And, uh, the media specialist at Hasty wanted to have a special days and to lay out, they were gonna have one class come in at a time, lay the books out, and have the kids kind of shop for a book, and she was wondering if any of us could be there at any of those days because they would want the school to thank us and the students to know, you know, who is there for them. So that's a lovely idea to have someone personalize it. And if I may, while I'm updating you on school issues, um, I wanted to tell you about amendment number one that's going to be on the ballot, uh, we'll be voting for in October. The amendment says, "Provides greater flexibility and state accountability to fix failing schools through increasing community involvement. Shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended to allow the state to intervene in chronically failing schools in order to improve student performance? Yes or no?" That's what we're gonna be asked to vote on. Now, the Cherokee County Board of Education has chosen to send a letter to Governor Deal saying that they do not support this amendment. They do not feel that, um, the school system should be ta- failing schools should be taken out of the hands of the local school board. This amendment's come under a lot of scrutiny and criticism for its language. Um, it's felt that provides greater flexibility and gr- increasing community involvement is misleading. How will the community be further involved? There's so many questions about this amendment and its intentions, its outcome, and what will happen if it does or does not pass. It behooves us as city leaders, each one of us represents twenty-five thousand people, and it behooves us, each one of us, to learn more about this amendment, how it is going to affect our state, how it's going to affect our education, how it affects our children, our grandchildren, and our friends' children. While this is a school board issue, our constituents rely on each one of us to know things. They have questions, and it's important that we have the information ready to answer their questions about this amendment. I'm not going to say anymore about it, I don't want to sway you one way or the other. I feel extremely strongly about this amendment, and, uh, I think that, um, I want each of you to learn as much as you can about it and be able to answer questions when you're asked.
Okay.
You may remember that Lisa Marie Haygood was here two council meetings ago to address the issue, and so if anybody has any questions, I'm sure, uh, Ms. Haygood, who is the state school PTA president, can help you.
Mr. Rust?
Sandy, I just wanted to thank you for the way you presented that because I think it, it's not our position on the council to tell people which way to vote, but certainly to tell people how important it is to inform yourself, to make an informed decision, and that's all we're asking you to do. So, it's very...
Exactly.
But that's your own, your own opinion, is your opinion, mine is mine, and I think the people need to decide for themselves, but don't make an uninformed decision.
Exactly.
Decide what is best for the community, is best for your children, and vote that way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. You have anything else? Okay. All right. Item C under Old Business, that's not worded exactly the way it probably should be. It says, "Discussion of Prohibition of Backlit Signs in Central Business District." Ken, can you help us with this one? Uh, this came up to me, I, I should have noted, noted it earlier, actually. I was trying to, uh, looking at the, the backlit signs prohibition is in the... is in the ordinance amendment that we passed recently regarding drive-throughs in the CBD. I guess my question is, I suspect that most signs, I could be wrong, that most signs in the city now are backlit. Would that be a fair assessment or not?
In portions of the city, in the Central Business District, there's only one backlit sign. And that sign is the marquee at the Canton Theater. Canton Building Authority did install that. The Building Authority is exempt from complying being an instrument of the state.
Now, is that a backlit sign?
Yes, sir.
Or like a TV screen?
It's a, it's a digital li, interior lighted sign that has changeable copy. But there again, the Canton Building Authority was the owner of the Canton Theater at the time that sign was purchased and installed. And the Building Authority is an instrument of the state of Georgia, and they're exempt from complying with local regulations.
So, so what you're telling me is that's the only backlit sign in the CBD district?
That I'm aware of, yes, sir.
I'm surprised at that. Maybe I don't understand what backlit is exactly. I thought I did. Is it, what?
Other parts of the city have a lot of backlit signs. But within the Central Business District, that's the only one that I can think of.
Okay.
Ken, Panera Bread is the, is the subject of this wording primarily. Did we approve their plan with a backlit sign, or are we?
No plans have been submitted to the city yet.
Oh, so we are free to change their rules, make rules that will apply.
If Mayor City Council will recall, City Council instructed Mr. Dyer, City Attorney, myself, to meet and come up with a proposal to come back to City Council for your consideration. When this was first presented as an amendment to the sign regulations, there was a lot of discussion about multiple items and issues at the work session meeting. And council instructed Mr. Dyer and I to bring something back for the follow-up meeting. Mr. Dyer and I did meet, talked about multiple items and things that would be added into the proposed ordinance coming back to City Council, put it on the agenda, and City Council adopted it.
Right. Mr. Rust.
Ken, if we approve this ordinance as presented in two weeks, what are the alternatives? Since you've sat down and discussed it with her and our city attorney, do they have an alternative? You could have a frontlit sign, I suppose. I'm not sure that's even going to be more, less attractive than a backlit sign.
They can do a downcast lighting, like a small gooseneck over the menu board.
Do they, do they have? Did they say what they were thinking of?
No.
Oh, because we haven't, we haven't passed the ordinance yet.
Well, we have passed the ordinance.
It has been adopted.
The ordinance was passed the last month.
Yeah.
Well, this is specific to a menu board.
Correct.
This is specific to a menu board, so it's not talking about any other kinds of signs.
This is, if you want to have a drive-through, and you want to have the drive-through in the Central Business District, this is one of the conditions you have to meet.
How do you justify that, though?
Well, the, if, I mean, I was wondering if our ordinance allows backlit signs in the CBD anyway. I haven't really looked at that.
Don't think that it does.
I don't think it does. I mean, a backlit sign is where the light is interior. You know, it'll be a plastic-looking sign or vinyl. That's a bad way to put it, but, and the lighting is from inside. So it's lit up like a light, as opposed to light shining on the sign. So that, in theory, the idea is that light's not going to bother anybody else because it's only shining on the signs.
But in this one, it's specific, it says menu board.
Well, it's because it's for a drive-through restaurant.
Right.
Right.
So we would only be prohibiting the backlit menu board. Other signs, apparently.
Well, they're prohibited in the CBD otherwise.
They're already not.
Correct, in the CBD. So there's two ways to do it. One was, say, well, if not allowed in CBD anyway, you're not going to let a drive-through have one. Or to say, if you're going to have a drive-through, this is one of the requirements because we don't want it to bother, you separate it out from residential for the same reason. Any of these things can be changed. It was just put forth because somebody had to come up with ideas.
Really?
So for instance, if you were to go through the drive-through of a Starbucks, most Starbucks signs are not backlit. They're lit from the front.
How about Chick-fil-A?
Chick-fil-A's is backlit. The difference there is that because we haven't seen a site plan on this development, we don't know where the menu board's going to be, and we don't know what the impact of that menu board may have on other potential uses on that site. So by saying that we are not allowing a backlit sign, it wouldn't matter where they place it. There shouldn't be any light pollution from the actual sign. But if they did want to come in and do a backlit sign, they could ask for a variance.
Did I understand you to say that backlit signs are not allowed in CBD?
Correct.
So why did we even mention that for a, a drive-through in CBD? Why did we even say that, if it's prohibited anyway?
Because we don't have any other menu signs in the CBD. This is a specific condition on that particular type of sign, not on signs in general, because it already exists in signs in general.
Why would, if it's on, if it's on signs in general, why would you then point it out to any one specific type? If it's in general, it covers it already, doesn't it? Looks to me like.
Because we don't allow drive-throughs anywhere else.
I think the answer to that question is maybe not. It may not be covered in general because we, I don't know if it's included in our sign definition. If a menu board would be included in a sign definition, that would be something to check. But again, these are conditions to allow a business to have a drive-through restaurant in CBD. And I think it would, it is, you do need to put those conditions out. Yeah, maybe it's overkill, but it also doesn't hurt anything to have it in there. If somebody comes in and says, hey.
I'm not saying I want to do away with it. I'm just trying to figure out how to justify it in that light, and yet, no pun intended, but not allow it, you know, somewhere else. It just seems.
It would be the same justification, while you don't allow them in CBD at all, is the same justification. It's the light pollution. It's, you want the light to be contained within that sign. And in this case, we want the light to be contained within that restaurant area, as opposed to.
So we're not, we're not, as I understand it, we would not, within the city of Canton, there will be, there can be no backlit signs?
No, sir, that's not what any of us have said.
Only in CBD.
Only in the Central Business District.
They're all up and down Riverstone.
Zoning District.
Well, that's what I thought. But how do you justify that in CBD?
Because we are allowing a drive-through in the Central Business District. But we're allowing a drive-through in the Central Business District, which we would not have allowed without this original change. So in making this change to allow for that, we're trying to preserve our traditional sign patterns in downtown based on what someone with a restaurant with a drive-through might request as part of their development that might be available somewhere else but may not fit within the guidelines of what we want to see our signs downtown appear.
Are, are signs even allowed to be lit in any manner in CBD?
No.
I don't think you can have any light on a sign in CBD.
What about the one, what about the one oh?
You can have directly on it, right. I mean, it's a, a backlit sign is also a type of sign. I mean, in CBD, we require monument and so forth. But the theory, I think, is just you don't like the look of those signs in the CBD. You're looking, you're going for a more historical look, and you don't want lit signs.
So if they ever backlight the name of their restaurant, that's already, we already know that, right? If they want to have the name of their restaurant and they backlight that, that's already prohibited.
No, if it's like a wall sign, uh.
No, I mean on the front. If it's Chico's and they backlight that, that's already prohibited.
That would be a wall sign, and in the Central Business District, that cannot be allowed.
That's prohibited already, and so I think this one would be too, but we're just being real specific.
Well, that's clear. Let's go on to the next item. I mean, I don't see a problem with it. I just have a hard time justifying the, how it can be one way and not the other way and what the real problem was with it, you know? I never really, driving through Chick-fil-A or somewhere, I never really thought about, boy, I wish they had the down, that sign downlighted, you know? I mean, something downlit, whatever. Right, and you don't have many houses right downtown either, though, you say. You'd have more houses out in the other areas of the city than you have downtown.
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like very much to preserve the historic flavor of our downtown and not allow a backlit menu board, but be open-minded to hear a variance if they come forward with one from a site plan. But I'm all in favor of keeping the flavor of our historic district and our sign ordinances.
I think we all are. I think, hopefully, we all are. The next item. Discussion of the Policy of Honorary Dedication of Naming of Public Facilities. This came up, as you know, from last month regarding the dedication of our canoe ramp. And, you know, I'm not sure whether we even need a policy or not. As I've thought about it, the policy could be, in my opinion, as simple as, if someone nominates or has an idea for something, it's got to come before the council for approval. And that, that would be pretty simple, I think. And I'm not sure whether we need policy or not.
Having worked down at the state, this comes up a great deal with Department of Transportation, for instance, the naming of roads and things like that. And you always get yourself in the situation where perhaps a group of people want to name a section of road after an individual who's done great things for the community, or they've, you know, some type of war hero, or an educator, or something like that. The problem that you get into is you never know what that person's going to do with the rest of their life. And now you've named a road after somebody, and maybe they become a criminal, or, you know. You get into those situations. So a lot of jurisdictions, what they'll do is they'll say, sure, we'll have a policy on naming things, but we don't name anything after someone who is currently living because we don't know what the script is going to be for the rest of that lifespan. And, you know, I would just put that out there for the council because you are making a lasting decision for future councils and for future citizens, and you may not know what the impact of that decision is. It's hard to do something wrong after you're dead, so.
Well, you know, I'm not sure you're making a lasting decision. If you name it, you can unname it, right?
You can, and there are examples of roads across Atlanta that were named after former congresspeople, and then they went a little crazy in Washington, and they decided to change the name of the road because they didn't like that congressperson anymore. And it, at that point, citizens look at it, and they say, you're just wasting resources on changing signs and street names. And if you're going to make a decision, make a decision, make it a final decision.
Yeah. Mr. Grant?
I do think whether we have a policy or not for naming, if there's any sort of recognition of plaques or names applied to any city property or signage, that there should be standards in place for that, you know, that, and the city handles that and not private organizations or different organizations, such as what happened at the canoe launch, that, you know, a sign appears and, you know, that's not necessarily within the city's standards or appropriate. So that's, I don't know we need a standard, but it seems like we need some kind of guidelines there somewhere, somewhere to trigger if something happens, like, you know, sort of that, what happens if it, if we do decide that something's named after someone? So if we do approve it, what happens then, so?
Yeah, I think the, the problem that I have here is that if, regardless of what kind of policy we have on, on that issue, if someone comes in and makes a request, we could say, well, it's not our policy, but we'd have to say yes or no, looks like, anyway. So the council's going to end up making that final decision. But if, if, if you would like, and Bill, I would like to ask you to work on this issue as far as taking, taking a look, see if there are some guidelines. And maybe, you know, Paris, John would work on that and try to come up with, with some general guidelines that could, could save us a lot of trouble and give us an excuse for not doing something particularly, you know? If somebody come in and said they wanted to, you know, name the Jones Building after somebody that you didn't really want it done, then of course, we'd say that doesn't fit our policy, you know? So, okay? John?
Thank you for putting me on this committee. I can tell you one concern I have. Now we got one, we will soon have one fire department in the whole county. But I lived on a street once in Illinois, and they changed the name of my street. It was only two blocks long or three blocks long. And they said the reason they changed it is because on the weekend, five different fire departments consolidated their phone calls, and they reacted from one central call station. Now, we've got a 911 dispatch in the county, so that's always the same. But when you take a section of a street and change it, or you might have two, if it's a long street, you might have two or three different honorary names. Someone calls in a fire and they say, I live on such and such a street, and it's like, two blocks down, it's a different street. It's always a different, I mean, it was a very big concern because when they changed my street, I was all for it. I thought, this is okay. It's very inconvenient for people that might have stationery printed up and all this stuff. It turned out that there was two or three other streets named the same as what they changed it to. It's like, so wake up. So I think when we, as a policy, put together something, we have to look very carefully at what is being proposed and the, the safety ramifications or a police call. Somebody gives you a harebrained name, it's the name of his street or her street, but it kind of doesn't fit in a policeman's thing of Marietta Highway, you know? Well, two blocks of that is X Street. So I guess I just have a concern about those considerations. And certainly, if we have some policy put together, we can spell those out and make sure that we don't make mistakes like I was a part of in my life. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Discussion of the Annual Update to Capital Improvement Plan and the Five-Year Short-Term Work Plan.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as you're aware, part of having a impact fee program is we have to submit an annual update through Atlanta Regional Commission, owned to Georgia Department of Community Affairs, on an annual basis. What you have for you is the proposal for the next annual update, which does contain a resolution to transmit, the year-end financial, which is estimated at this point in time. And then the capital improvement element, items for each of our impact fee categories. In our council agenda report that I prepared, included language that, after consolidation takes effect, January 1st, city and the county would have to amend their capital improvements element, five-year short-term work program. Mr. Peppers and I met with the city and county's consultant that originally did the methodology studies yesterday. We will not have to do an amendment at that point in time. I will be proposing a major overhaul methodology study in the next year's budget coinciding with our five-year rewrite of our comprehensive plan to revisit methodology and the fee structures. But this is something that's required to maintain qualified local government status. We have to do it every year. I'm here to answer any questions any of you might have.
Okay. Anyone have some questions on this? I've got one or two here I want to ask. Under Parks and Recreation and Open Space, the golf course is on there. And I just don't, I'm sure I just don't understand this as well as I ought to. But this is showing a project start date in seventeen and a project completion date of 2021. Well, we only owe one more payment on that golf course, and it'll be paid for in September of eighteen. Should that date not be changed?
Yes, sir, and we can make that amendment prior to submitting to the state.
Twenty seventeen, I mean.
I had not been informed of that being paid off at that time is the reason for that within the parks.
Twenty seventeen's when it'd be actually paid off. I noticed the Edouard River Greenway has been sort of left blank there. I noticed the Etowah River Greenway has been sort of left blank there on, on about the third line down, but yet, at the very bottom, it's back in Etowah River Greenway and other costing contingencies at seven point eight million dollars. Should that have a different name?
The Etowah River Greenway is a heading for Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, and Phase Five. Is the reason that that column is blank, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, okay. Shouldn't we also change the name of Mill Number Two since it hasn't been Mill Number Two for twenty years?
Yes, I can do that. That's what's been in the City of Canton's annual updates since the, the city has been implementing its impact fee program. I will put a footnote on this prior to submitting to Georgia Department of Community Affairs to explain to them the reason, because I know they'll come back with a comment and want to know why the change from last year's annual update.
Well, you might not want to do that, I don't know. It's not that important.
I can do it in a footnote, Mr. Mayor.
Are, are you saying that the Etowah River Greenway at the bottom, the seven point eight eight million, that's, is that the total of some of those above?
No, sir. That is, uh, additional costing contingencies.
Oh, okay.
Uh, that might occur, engineering costs, things of that nature. And these numbers come out of a study that was done several years ago that we've been carrying forward for a number of years.
I got you. Ms. Wilson?
Do, do maintenance, uh, cost for maintenance of the parks and the other areas, is that charged to the impact fee?
No.
So, I was, I was just sort of wondering what bowling park, what's in, on the agenda for bowling park?
Nine hundred thousand dollars for something.
That has been in there. That could be, uh, improvements to trails, additional trails. It could be, uh, additional ball fields. Uh, there's a number of items that could come under that category.
We talked about extending the trail all the way around, so I'm sure that, that probably would be.
Maybe we need to be general in these terms, but it'd be good to know, kind of have specific projects out there that we're really working on, you know, other than just the park. What are we going to do with that park, you know? Anyone else on that?
And, uh...
Question. You know, it seems like there's kind of a gray area, the difference between maintenance and capital improvements. You can't use it for maintenance, but you can use it for capital improvement. Couldn't you almost make a capital improvement that overshadows the need for maintenance because you're improving it? You know what I'm saying? I mean, you say, well, we need to put new equipment in or something, and they say, well, let's just change it, and we'll not improve it, we'll change it and make a capital investment. How, how is that controlled, that, that gray area is really black and white?
Ultimately, that's going to be a decision that would fall to city council as well as Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia Department of Community Affairs questioning something that's within the capital improvements element as to whether it's an operations and maintenance expense, or if it's a capital expenditure that meets the guidelines specified in the state's impact fee law.
Would the state make their decision before the improvement or after?
Uh, if they have questions, they will let us know when we submit the annual update.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you.
It's, 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 it's sort of the same restriction on splosh money, and, and so it's a routine. Mr. Ingram has it in his mind, he knows what it is, but it's made, generally, it's you can't spend it on salaries of people who are doing maintenance work. You have to be buying something.
Okay. Equipment or something.
And it has to have a ten-year shelf life.
Thank you.
Under the road improvements, Ken, reservoir drive is on there.
Yes, sir.
Now, we put that on at five point three million dollars. Now, what, do we know what that is and what was used as the projects to calculate five million two hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred seventy-four?
That was the estimated project cost for installation of that roadway. The reason reservoir drive is...
Installation of what?
That is the estimated construction cost for reservoir drive. Uh, that was, uh, has been in our capital improvements element for a number of years. Reservoir drive is in here because there is still an outstanding encumbrance that has not been resolved relative to road impact fee credits.
But it's nowhere near, that encumbrance is nowhere near five point two million, is it?
Sir?
The encumbrance is nowhere near five point two million, is it?
No, sir, but this, that item, we have to give ARC and Georgia DCA the estimated project construction cost, not what the encumbrance is or what is left to pay.
Okay. On the Herd Road Extension.
Yes, sir.
That's a project that's been talked about for a long, long time, off and on, but I don't think it's ever been seriously, in my opinion, really considered of actually the city taking an effort to spend a million five to start that project. Does everyone know where the Herd Road Extension is?
There is a roadway that has been dedicated for four-lane, uh, within Park Village with a single lane in each direction that is inside the city limits of Canton. That is proposed to extend through Bluff, uh, Technology Park property over to Bluff's Parkway, and then the county in their capital improvements element, they also have Herd Road Extension within their CIE for a portion of that road to be improved in the county up to the backside of the airport.
On the backside of the airport?
Yes, sir.
So, so the idea is to go from the Bluffs rather than going up to Fake Con and going to the Herd Road to the airport, is to go from the Bluffs directly to the airport?
Yes, sir.
When do you think that'll happen? Oh, I'm sorry. It's going to happen in 2021?
When, uh, city council, uh, has funding available. This, uh, has been in the annual updates in our road capital improvements element since before I came to work with the city.
And how about Bluff?
Continue carrying it because there has been, uh, right-of-way dedicated for four-lane, Divided Medium Boulevard, uh, on a portion of the property inside the city limits. Uh, there are two lanes that have been paved relative to this capital improvement, system improvement, but it's up to city council as to when they want to actually budget the money move forward.
And on Bluff Parkway, what, what do we, what would that be?
There are, uh, road impact fee credits still outstanding relative to the construction of that road.
So, we still owe impact fee credits to somebody, right?
Correct.
Okay. And we, and would that be an amount of two point, well, that was the total amount originally, right?
That was the estimated construction cost.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions? Still sort of complicated, to be truthful to me, but, uh... I mean, when you got projects on there, you probably, something, something about updating a, a project for the last five, ten, fifteen years, and the same thing being on there, you know. Sometimes you got to say, are we going to do this project or not?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. If, uh, we did send a notice out to all council members back in August and gave them our, gave you all a copy of our current capital improvements element to look at, knowing that we're coming up towards this annual update and public hearing for the discussions about projects.
Yes, you did.
Can, can I make a...
Yes, you did. But you, you know how we are, don't you?
Can, can I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor? Uh, since, since we're wanting to look at updating the methodology in the next fiscal year, so, within the next calendar year, 2017, why don't we put this as an agenda item for discussion at the retreat? And, and think about those changes that we might want to include so that when they do go through the process of updating the methodology, we kind of have those ideas in our mind at that time, and we can discuss them with the consultant.
Yeah, I think it's going to take a little more time for me to understand all the processes, why some of these dates were stuck out there and these amounts that, you know, been there for years and years and, and, uh, no action, so forth. So, I agree with that. Thank you for that suggestion. All right. Uh, the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member.
We will be voting on that at our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion to Award Design Contract for HLC Bridge Repainting Project to Hazen and Sawyer in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, uh, we solicited a proposal from Hazen and Sawyer to prepare design documents and conduct bidding and inspection of repainting the bridge that crosses over the dam. Um, Hazen and Sawyer is a coating specialist that is on, uh, the, Cott Marietta uses for all their facilities, so we just kept with them. The, the contract is for preparing bid documents to, to obtain a contractor to repaint the bridge, and more importantly, go over the testing and inspection during that, make sure we have proper coatings and everything else on the bridge, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? You don't think it'd be better to make that stainless steel and have it be done with it somehow?
Well, it's already existing, so I don't...
That's great. Now, with this cost assessment of thirty-five thousand, will we just be paying our portion?
Yeah, twenty-five percent of that.
Twenty, twenty-five percent.
And that's actually a not-to-exceed amount. Um, we may, it may come in less, depending on the amount of time they spend on inspections.
Okay, so we won't be paying over twenty-five percent of the thirty-five thousand dollars? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, so we'll be voting on that one at the, uh, the meeting on the seventeenth, I guess, seventeenth? No, twentieth, yeah. Discussion of Authorization for the Mayor to Sign the Chief Loan Modification Documents to Extend the Completion Date of the Wastewater Treatment Plant Loan Agreement.
Yes, the, when the, the original loan documents were signed, it was based on a completion date. I forget what the date was, but the end, uh, draw time for the loan was December of 2016, which stated basically we had to make all our loan draws by the December 2016. That's not going to happen. Um, what these documents do is extend that period to, I believe, it's December 2017.
But we should be through before that, right?
We're hoping that everything should be done in the springtime, and everything else in the loan agreement remains the same, same amount, same rate, and everything like that, so, that's, that's all of that.
Good. Okay. Any questions on that, anyone? Okay. Next item, Discussion of, uh, Proposed FY 2016 Budget Amendment Salary Adjustments Due to Compensation Study.
We have before you a budget amendment, um, that's based on last fiscal year. So, this is a cleanup amendment to the budget. As you recall, in January of last year, we implemented a compensation study increase for employees. Most of our departments were able to withstand within their budgets those adjustments as those adjustments reflected in increases in FICA taxes and things like that. We did have a few departments where it was still above their budget, and so this is a cleanup amendment that allows us to take money that was placed in contingency last year for the compensation study and amend those particular department budgets to clean those up so that we clean up these books with those adjustments before we provide them to our auditors, uh, later on this year. So, it, it's clearly just a cleanup amendment. Personnel is one of those sections of the budget where we can't pull funds from other parts of the, of the program budget to, to make up gaps. So, even though we were under budget as a city, that's the one line item we can't amend into. So, we're just reflecting it from our contingency account and cleaning it up on the front end.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about that? Okay, good. Um, next item, Possible Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Canton and Cherokee County to Build and Collect Property Taxes.
Absolutely. We had a discussion with, um, uh, the county tax commissioner, Sonia Little, and some of her staff. We had some of our staff there as well for the discussion, and Nathan's here, he can help answer some questions also. As, as you know, through the consolidation of the fire department, one of the things that we have discussed is that in the coming tax year, we will be breaking out the fire, the cost of fire tax from our traditional M and O taxes. In thinking about the changes we're going to be making to our own tax billing, one of the things that we wanted to do is sit down with the county tax commissioner and revive a conversation that came out several years ago, which is allowing the county to do our tax billing for us. So, our citizens would receive one tax bill that would include city taxes and county taxes on the same bill. So, instead of getting two tax bills, they would get one. Likewise, for seniors who would be filing senior exemption paperwork, they would only have to file in one location. They wouldn't have to file both with the city and with the county. Um, under this plan, the county would also be responsible for the collection of tax bills and then the remission of those tax funds back over to the city. They already do tax billing services for Nelson and Ball Ground. So, they're already working with municipalities on that. The cost to us is two dollars a parcel, so we calculate that out to be about twenty-five thousand dollars roughly a year that it would, uh, cost the city to allow them to do the tax billing. They have some different payment processing than we do allow, and they also have locations in Woodstock and Canton as well. So, it gives an opportunity for our citizens to have another place that they can go and pay their bills. So, there's some real wins on it, that, on that side from the taxpayer. From our standpoint, it also is going to clear up some employee time that we spend working on tax bills that we can reallocate to other things such as rental property registry or, or the like. Some things that we'll have to do as a city to prepare if we do want to, if we do want to contract out that tax service, we would like to do it as soon as possible because that would allow us, as people are coming in to pay their tax bills this year, to let them know, next year, you're only going to receive one bill. It'll be from the county. Here's a sample of what the bill will look like, so don't expect to get two bills next year. We could also notify those banks and lending institutions that are paying those through escrows that next year they would make one payment and give us a good amount of time to plan for that. One requirement that we do have under this proposal is that by, um, August 1st of each year, the county has to have our millage rate adopted so that they can get it placed on the county tax bills. Currently, we, we pretty much know what our millage rate is going to be by August 1st because August is the month we come to council with our budget recommendation. So, we may have to back up our budget process a little bit of time. You may have to adopt the millage rate before we adopt the budget, but we, we can work through that logistical change in our, in our formatting of the process. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Rust?
Really, just the way you presented it, I want to be very clear. People that currently have a senior exemption with the city and the county will not have to refile anything. It will be merged, and it'll just, new people that come in will have to file with one agency now instead of two.
What, what, what happens occasionally, I won't say it happens often, but what happens occasionally is you'll have a senior taxpayer who files the exemption with the county, and they do not file the exemption with the city by April 1st. Or they'll file with the city and not file with the county. And they just assume that when they filed with one, it's good for both, and in that instance, it's not. So, under this scenario, we are cleaning up that process. They would file, and they would only file through the county.
Ms. Wilson?
I haven't seen one of the bills that other cities have merged with the county. How obvious is it that this bill is a bill from the county and a bill from the city?
So, so one of the things that, that, and the mayor mentioned it to me earlier today, and I think we'll work on it before the next meeting, we'll see if we can get a, a draft copy of what the bill might look like. Get a copy of Ball Ground's bill, for instance, which already shows that. But basically, when you're looking at the lines on the bill, it's going to have everything that you would already have on your county bill, your board of education taxes, any bonds that are on there, your county M and O, and then it's also going to have fire services and City of Canton M and O on there. it's also gonna have fire services and City of Canton M and O on there. And then it will apply the exemption across the billing through their calculations, and you'll see one number at the bottom, and that'll be what's, what's payable to the city, or what's payable to the county, and then remitted to the city for their share of the taxes.
So, you're gonna only have one total?
One total.
Or will there be a total? This is my city taxes and this is my county?
It'll all be totaled into one total.
Right.
So, I don't know how much I'm paying city taxes and how much I'm paying county taxes.
It'll be itemized.
It'll be, it'll be itemized, yes. They'll be, they'll be in a ma- right now, when you get your tax bill, you know how much, if you're looking across the line, you know how much of your bill is related to the Board of Education.
I think I got my county bill today.
Or the part, right, you have gotten your bill today or, or in the last week. And it spells out in there how much of your bill is going to the Parks and Recreation Bond. It will still say how much of it's going to City of Canton Fire Services and how much of it is going to, uh, City of Canton M and O on the side, but then it's gonna have one grand total that you would pay that would satisfy all of those taxes as part of one bill.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful if we could see one, you know, a, a bill that's now merged with Ball Ground or Nelson, who else is due. Are those the only two cities right now that are?
They are. There's some issues specific in Woodstock to the way their billing is done. Uh, they, their property tax bill includes the stormwater utility because not all of their citizens, not all of their parcels receive any other utility services from the city, so that's really the only way they can do that. And by law, uh, the tax commissioner can't collect that utility because it's not a tax. So, there's some logistical issues with Woodstock, uh, where they can't do it. Um, from our end, there's not any logistical issues where we couldn't do it. Now, the one thing that I would, I would mention to council is that if you get, currently if you're getting a senior tax exemption, right, that senior tax exemption is applied across all of your taxes. So, if you have a home that is valued above the exemption, you're paying a portion of those funds into our M and O type programs and also into fire services. So, when the new bill comes out, if we, if we do our billing with the county and you're a senior, you may see a dollar figure in that line for fire services, but it is associated with the cost of that service being above and beyond what you would be provided from a senior tax exemption.
They're already paying that.
They'd already be paying it. It'll just be line out the M, M and O piece of it and the fire piece of it.
Ms. Grant?
I think, um, you know, if, if the statement of the bill is, you know, designed correctly and, you know, communicated properly, and then we communicate the changes, things such as the, you just, uh, outlined on the senior and the M and O, um, and we communicate it properly, I mean, I think it's a huge, you know, benefit and customer service improvement over getting these two separate bills, not only having to pay them. I mean, I, for instance, have three separate parcels, so I get three from the county, three from the city. I have to go, you know, pay them two places, and then, you know, tax time, you know, come, I have to, you know, attach to six statements. I mean, it would just be a huge benefit, I think, and simplification, but just communicating the change, and I think as long as that one bill is, you know, very clear, uh, and we communicate that, communicate it, you know, correctly and effectively, I think it would be a, you know, a, a great customer service improvement. Uh, I think it may take some work to get there and communicate it, but I think it's, you know, I think it's essentially a good idea.
And that's why we wanted to bring it to you now, so that we've got a longer period of time, plus we can start notifying people this year as they're coming in to pay that tax bill that this is what we're changing.
Does the county have online payment?
They do take online payment. One thing that's different, they also take partial payments, so you get your tax bill in October, they'll allow you to pay on your tax bill in October, November, December. They'll allow you to make those partial payments.
I think that's a-
We don't typically do that.
I think if we could communicate that, I mean, I think that's another, again, another benefit, especially the time that taxes are due, uh, families with hardships, I think it's, uh, I think that'd be a huge benefit to them.
And another part about it that makes it, makes it a decision that we're willing as a staff to bring before you is their collection rate and our collection rate are all in the ninety-nine percent. So, it's, 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 there's, we're not gonna get into a situation where going to one bill may cost us tax dollars in the collection process.
Mr. Rust?
Um, what about late fees and splitting the collection, the money that comes in from late fees? Also, what happens when, uh, there's legal fees involved in collection? Or, worst case, I suppose, if there's a tax lien that has to be applied, is that gonna be a lien, uh, uh, the county gonna apply the lien, or is the city gonna apply the lien?
Uh, as far as collections in general, penalties, all of that will be prorated, I was told. Uh, collections as far as penalties, fees assessed on, on a property, that will be prorated between the county and city.
How about the cost, the legal expenses to, to try to collect it if it, if it goes beyond a normal ninety days or whatever, and, and, and if it ever goes to tax lien, he doesn't pay it, or she doesn't pay it at all?
Well, for instance, right now, you could have a property owner that hasn't paid either their city or their county taxes. It's really who gets, who gets there first to file for the lien. That's the first on the lien. In this instance, because it's all on one document, it's all applied at one time on the tax sale. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I just was trying to figure out, uh, if there is a lien, is it gonna be a county issue? For instance, if someone, i- if it goes to a tax sale because of that lien, how is that gonna be handled? Is it gonna be a county sale or a city sale, or both? I don't know. It gets complicated.
I may not have understood your initial question, but if, if we put a lien, and let's say there's three thousand dollars of county tax-
We, no, don't say that. Be- we, the city puts a lien, or the, the county puts a lien, or?
The county, or either one, if there's a lien placed on that property for back taxes and three thousand dollars is owed for the county and a thousand's owed for the city, and it goes to sale and it sells for two thousand dollars, it's prorated split, you know, split between the county and city.
That, that's, that's pretty simple, but who, I mean, could we have a lien and they not have a lien? We just break it out, I guess.
Yeah, it does occur now, but under this process, what, what, what basically the tax commissioner said is anything that we collect, we're gonna prorate. So, we're not gonna have a situation where somebody pays the county portion of the tax bill, not the city portion of the tax.
So, even if we aggressively pursue it and collect, we're still gonna have to split it with the county?
So, if for some reason I came in to pay my county tax bill and only paid half of it, well, that half of it that I paid is gonna be prorated between the two groups that are on there.
I gotcha.
And the lien is gonna be applied on the rest of it, which will also be prorated to the groups that are on there. We just have one person doing the work instead of all of us trying to compete to get the work done.
So, you'd probably work together to file a lien as one of the two?
What the, what the agreement says is that we, we are agreeing that the commissioner and the commissioner is agreeing to invoke any remedies allowed to collect city taxes. So, it may be semantics. There's only gonna be one lien and one tax sale. The, the commissioner may be doing the city lien and the city tax sale, but there's really, we won't file our own liens.
Okay.
The interest in penalties, now tell me how that is, uh, prorated or on what basis would there be a division of that, or would there be a division of it?
The, the percentage is known, and so it's just applied to each principal amount. I mean, it's, they get, they charge the same interest-
What about the penalty? It's a, it's just one penalty?
They, but they, but it's all state law. So, that's the thing we just changed with our ordinance. We, we changed our penalties to match the state law.
And the penalty is a percentage of the bill, so whether it's a percentage of us together or us separate, it's still the same percentage.
So, it's not a dollar amount, it's a pers- percent, uh, penalties now are a percentage. What, and interest is a percentage?
Correct.
Uh, my, my point was, you could calculate it. They know. The only, the only time would ever be a question would be if somebody didn't pay in full, and that's where the proration comes in.
So, w- we, we would still get the same amount of interest or penalties that we would get otherwise?
Correct.
Because it's based on the total.
State controlled. How much we, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
But we, we'll see if we can get us a copy of the, of the draft bill. Um, at, at the very least, if they don't have their system set up, we can get a copy of the Ball Ground bill, and then we can show you what our proposed look would be on the, on the Kent bill. There's also a text box on the bill as well where they can add in city text and things like that for anything we wanna put in there.
It, it seems like we might have a few glitches on the startup, but after it gets going, it should be simpler, I would think.
Well, and we, we specifically asked them about issues that they had seen in other jurisdictions, and, and basically what they said was Ball Ground is doing, Ball Ground did what we're trying to similarly do and have it done this year so that we can start letting people know. And they said, the longer amount of time that you've got to communicate, the much smoother the transition is.
Sure.
And may I add also, please recall that, that county assesses taxes. So, they send us the information that we use. We review it, and we apply our exempt, a senior exemption, and we send it back to them so that they can bill. So, hopefully that will mitigate any of the issues, you know, as far as the-
Thank you, thank you.
And also, they have the, because they do the assessments, they have the changes in assessments as well, so we build things based off of what may change, or all of it's real time, so it's all done in their system. So, there's less opportunity for that error.
I think, Mr. Grant, I was right, it's gonna, communication's gonna be the key, yes, and, and, you know, sometimes it's very difficult to get that word out, so I agree, the longer, the better. Um, so, one thing we would have to communicate as well to our seniors is that when they turn sixty-two, they need, still have to come into our water department and file for that lower garbage rate.
Sure.
So, they'd still need to do that.
Well, one of the things that, um, that, that we had considered last year, we had an individual that came in and said, "Look, I didn't know I had to file the senior exemption. It's the end of April. Please waive it." Well, I, I can't do that, you know? And we have that issue that comes up routinely. We post information on, on our property, uh, downstairs that says, "Make sure you file this." There's notices throughout the building saying that information. One of the things that we did consider is, in the next year, maybe we wanna have a, a senior town hall somewhere in the community where we talk about those things that seniors get as part of exemptions, you know, differences in services, different programming, allow some of our, some of our program providers to talk about senior things that they do, and talk about that at that point, but do it before April first.
Right. Anyone else? Okay. City manager's report?
I have, um, two items. Actually, I'm sorry, I have one item on the report tonight. Um, Northside Hospital is working, has been working on the lighting plan for, um, Commerce Boulevard, uh, where they will add the streetlights into Commerce Boulevard. They've been working with Georgia Power. Georgia Power has agreed to the light fixtures and has the supply of the light fixtures and all of that. Um, they've given them the price to install them. Georgia Power will handle all the installation. Um, the issue that we have is that Northside, private entity, is going to be installing through a contractor, Georgia Power, streetlights on public right-of-way. And so, what I would like to do, um, now that they've got their pricing is, is bring to council a resolution later this month that would allow Northside to do, through their contractor, Georgia Power, work on the public right-of-way, and an agreement in there that basically says, once Georgia Power has signed off on those lights, that they're working, they're properly installed, that the city would take ownership. We would dedicate that back. Typically, the lights would be dedicated with the road and everything else, but in this case, the roads are even dedicated, the lights have not, because they're not installed. So, we need to kind of wrap that up in a, in a simple agreement so that Northside knows it's okay to go ahead and move forward with the work of the construction of the lights, and that, once the lights are installed, the city's going to agree to take ownership of those lights as part of the public right-of-way.
What, what's a requirement for sidewalks in that area?
They will, I think, put up, I'm not sure, they require, uh, six foot of the sidewalk outside of the hallway, hallway entrance, and, uh, they're around the corner.
Okay, and, and? So, even though they own the whole parcel there south of the creek, would they just be putting si- they wouldn't be putting sidewalks in at the same time they're putting in the streetlights?
No, sir. They'll put sidewalks in and add the streetlights in.
Okay, are the streetlights gonna be in the middle, median, or they're gonna be along the side?
There's a problem with, uh, putting the streetlights as median, but, uh, representative of Northside represent.
I know they had looked at that at one point.
Yeah, I, I knew they had, yeah. Um, so, the, the sidewalks will be coming later?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the-
Oh, yeah, sure.
And then in that instance, we'll do the same thing. When they get ready to put in sidewalks, we'll get permission for them to do the work in the public right-of-way in an agreement that, once we've inspected them, we'll take ownership of them.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, and, and that will come up at the next meeting?
I, I would like to have the resolution drafted so we can bring it to you at the next meeting.
Okay, good. Uh, Ms. McGee?
Thank you. Mr. Pepper, sorry to put you on the spot.
Sure.
But, um, a meeting or two ago, you mentioned that you might have some information about the rental property registry. Uh, do you have any, uh, update on that yet?
I don't yet. One of the things that we're trying to do on the staffing side is think about, should we decide to go with the, with the county on tax billing, how that will open up some staff time so that we can start enforcing the rental property registry. Um, we have already sent out our ta- our tax bills had already been stuffed and ready to go when we brought the last discussion up, and so we're going to have to do a mailing to every residential parcel in the city, letting them know that we're putting the rental property registry information out there. This is where the form is, this is who you've gotta turn it in. So, there's some logistics to go through that, but it's gotta be done by April. So, there's a little bit of time, even if we don't get to it before the first of the year, for us to get the information out there before we have to start collecting it.
Ms. Wilson?
I just want to commend whoever, whoever was responsible for the road paving with the city. Every time I drive on one of the streets that's been repaved, it is really terrific, and I've been driving on them quite a bit lately. So, I wanted to thank you for, Scott, whoever y'all, all of y'all, I think, worked together on that. That is really a great upgrade, and I am thrilled with it.
One, um, that's a great segue into a, into a topic. We've been looking at, and I think I've told you before, we wanted to, um, work with a pavement management company to come in and review all of our infrastructure and help us prioritize those streets within the city that need to be repaired and the best way to repair them. And we've done an exhaustive search of different firms. We found one firm that has really excellent experience in working with communities, and, um, and they have a proposal before us, and I may bring that to council and ask you to approve that without going out to bid. We tried to search for, for proposers to do it, but it's such a specialized professional service that we're having a hard time finding firms with that experience and the detail that we need. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring that to you in the next, next few weeks.
Ms. Goodman?
Yeah, I wanted to, to just add on to what Ms. Wilson said. I've had a lot of people, um, stop me and say, "Wow, we really appreciate all the roads you got done this year." As you know, in the past, we weren't able to do many roads, but they were very surprised and very happy that we, we did do so many different roads, and a lot of them definitely needed it. Let me also mention one announcement, and I forgot, and I told the theater that I'd mentioned this. They're having the Zombie Fest on the fifteenth, and that's a well-attended event. If you all have never been to it, it's, it is amazing to see all that, but, uh, the kids all have a great time, and the adults too, from what I've seen, so, um, it's, it's a wonderful event that the, that I wouldn't have thought would have been wonderful, but it, it really is.
Big crowd. Okay. Ms. McGee?
Yes, thank you. And on that note, Great Sky thanks you for working on the sidewalks. We really appreciate that. And of course, Wooded Mountain Trail is tickled that they're about to get their work done. So, thank you very much for everyone who is involved with the sidewalks and the fixing of Wooded Mountain Trail.
I will mention to you that, at least over the last six or seven months, uh, Scott Hooper has done an excellent job being in charge of Public Works. Uh, when I got here, there tended to be this revolving door of employees, and it's very hard to work on these long-term projects when that group of employees is constantly changing, and it seems like we have a really great team in place down there right now, and they, they gelled well together, and it's moving those projects forward. and it's moving those projects forward. And so I think they've put in a lot of great work, and we're starting to see the benefits of having that cohesive team down at Public Works.
Anyone else?
Is this a golf ball marker?
It could be.
I don't think it is, it says integrity, professionalism.
The police department.
Did this come from the police department?
It did come from the police department. The police department has those to hand out to the community and children and things like that. And also, I'd be remiss, there are some pink shirts up there for you. All of our employees in Public Works, all of our non-public safety employees, I should say, on Fridays during the month of October, we'll be wearing our pink shirts here at City Hall and Public Works. For those, to, to, to support the fight against breast cancer, that's one of the things that we wanted to do as a staff, so. We encourage you to do the same on Fridays in October.
Anyone else?